So the session is recorded, so if you have any issues with that as it will be put online, please tell me the message as a speaker. Please tell me the message just so that we could remove your part. And apart from that, I leave it to the session chair to introduce the talks.
Thank you. So, welcome to the session of formats. So we have two presentation today. And the plan is that we have the first presentation, as it was mentioned, for thirty minutes, it's recorded, and then you can ask questions using the Q and A button. You can type your question there. If you have any problem with typing it, I can unmute you and you can ask question directly. So don't hesitate to do in both ways. And also, just want to say that at the end, we have thirty minutes with plus five, seven minutes for question, but we a bit flexible. So I would like to introduce the first speaker. So we have the first talk of John Liu. So John Liu will present the work on closing the gap between discrete abstraction and continuous control. So it's called also completeness via robustness and controllability. And we can start the presentation right now.
In this talk, I will talk about abstraction based controller design. And in particular, I talk about a notion of completeness to interpret the results of controller synthesis when it comes to abstraction based control design. And as a brief motivation to to discuss this work and engineering systems are becoming more and more complex. And in general, because of the complexity of the system dynamics and the specification, it's challenging to certify the system being safe or satisfy some formal specification. So one way to cope with this is to use formal methods. So you're given a formal specification of the system. You're also given a system model. And the formal methods for controller synthesis aims to answer the question whether there exists a controller to render the system to satisfy a certain specification or there does not exist such a controller. And one way to do this, especially when it comes to deal with continuous dynamic system is you can use abstraction based controller synthesis. And in this approach, you can abstract a ODE with inputs to a finite transition system. Then you can use this finite transition system to design a controller for the original system. Often, this needs to hybrid controller. And there are many benefit of doing this. For example, this can handle long linear dynamics and can handle rich specifications at the same time. And this also leads to algorithmic approaches to design a controller which can potentially be automated. And by how you construct the abstraction, you can also ensure the system or the controller is correct by construction. And one limitations, of course, is because we use an abstraction or discretization. And this is potentially computationally expensive. So when you describe the system, you get a result, you says this abstract system is not realizable or cannot realize the specification. You'd like to extract some information out of it. But without any completeness guarantees, there is no information can be extracted whether or not the original system or some slightly modified system will not or will satisfy the specification. So motivated by this, in this talk, we'll talk about robustness as a metric for measuring completeness in this abstraction based approach. I also discussed briefly in some context, the necessity of having robustness when it comes to computing controllers or verifying dynamic systems. And here's a problem set up. So you're given an ODE with inputs and x lies, the state x lies in some set X and you lie since on set U. And you can have formal specifications. In general, you can have a linear time specification. For example, you can have properties written as a temporal logic formula like this. Here you have a safety requirements, you have a reachability requirements. You can also have always eventually type specification, which is essentially a generous bush objective. Or you can have a rich state specification like this. And the objective is to design a controller such that the close to solutions starting from some non empty initial set W zero was satisfying this specification. And the actual set of initial conditions satisfy this specification or can be controlled to satisfy this specification can be called the winning set of this this problem. And soundness essentially means whatever you compute has to be a subset of the actual winning set. And by completeness, you want to be able to capture the actual winning set. Or in some sense, you want to approximate the actual mean set will be more precise later on in this talk. So I'd like to have some remarks here. So in general, this problem is unsolvable in the sense that even reachability for nonlinear system, even one dimensional system is undecided. And this is known back twenty, thirty years ago. And actually, in different contexts, some in neural networks, some in just simply dynamic systems, some in the in even in the physics literature talking about dynamic systems being, does it have can you do more computation than than a Turing machine context? And in some special case cases, decibility reachability can be be hard to 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 decide. And for example, there are some old and recent work on this topic. And in particular, we highlight in HCC, even the LTI system, when you add the control constraints, the problem become undecided easily. And therefore, to be able to discuss this, you have to use some abstraction as we discussed earlier on. And you have to be able to to allow such approximations. And really, the focus is what can you still say about the guarantees in terms of correctness and completeness, despite you're using such approximations? So in this particular paper, we'll talk about continuous time system written as a nonlinear control system in this form. And we will talk about sample data, sample data control strategy, which means essentially you sample this state of the system. Then you're going to apply a constant control, you're going to hold it for simplicity. You can hold for a time, then you can you can apply the controller accordingly. Here, you assume that the controller can potentially have infinite memory because you can record the past history of the states. But in some simpler specifications, even for LTR specifications, I think all you need is finite memory control strategies. And we will talk about a particular perturbation, which is essentially can be written as a differential inclusion in equation three over here. And which is the original system perturbed by a delta size perturbation in the sense that a delta ball centered around the origin can be added to the right hand side of the equation. And we're going to denote this system by S delta. So this is going to be a differential inclusion. And then you can write down the sample data sort of representation for the continuous time system as a transition system. Essentially says you can capture the transition by if there is a transition from X zero to X one, then you have to add a transition in the in the transition system to capture this transition. So so here X is the solution of this differential inclusion. Of course, when delta equal to zero, just simply go back to the original ODE. And you can write down this system as just, you know, I think probably have this is just going to be, yeah, it's a simple simplification of the notation. Yeah, there's no typo. And so we define what what does it mean for a transition system to be in an abstraction of another transition system? And here, both system can be non deterministic. And you can think about the abstraction essentially being over approximating the behavior of the system. At the same time, you want to be under approximating the control when you're abstracting the system. Sort of like you want to limit the possible choice of controls. At the same time, for this corresponding control, the outcome of the abstraction should be an over approximation in terms of the number of transitions that you're having. So that's essentially the idea. And you can illustrate this with a diagram. For example, if T two abstract T one according to the relation alpha is for any state Q one, there has to be an abstract Q two such that for any action A two, there should be an action A one, then the outcome of A one under the original system should be over approximate, over approximated by the behavior in the abstract system. Essentially over approximating transitions and under approximating controls. And therefore, you have a trace containment and you can ensure correctness. And also, because they are under approximating the control, you can preserve realizability of controller essentially. And this is very much similar to the notion of alternating refinement relation by other and others in presented even twenty seven years ago. And based on this abstraction, you can easily show that this notion of abstraction will preserve linear time properties and in particular, preserve properties written as temporal logic formulas. And if there is a controller strategy for an abstract system, there should be a control strategy for the conquer system to satisfy the same specification. So this is essentially the setup of the of the paper. So now, we'd like to review some of the early result we obtained in this in this completeness results. So here are S delta one, S delta two are essentially difference equations, which are written in these two equations. And based on the assumption that if you know F is locally lipschitz on the set X and U, then the result says you can always construct an abstraction for S delta one, which is this difference difference inclusion over here, written as a transition system. And at the same time, this T can be abstracted or over approximated by the behavior of S delta two. So this delta one, delta two can be any arbitrary arbitrary parameters. Only requirement is delta two is strictly greater than delta one, but they can be arbitrarily closed. And the essential idea behind this is you can approximate, you can compute arbitrarily close over approximation of S delta one. At the same time, you have to make sure the technical conditions are satisfied such that this system over here will all approximate T. So the consequence of this is as long as there is a delta two robust strategy for I mean, for this system on the right hand side, we should be able to construct a finite transition system T. And at the same time, this finite system can be used. I mean, the strategy senses as using this T can be used on the original system, right? And in other words, if I cannot find such a T based on the, you know, the parameter that can be seen in the proof of the theorem, then the system cannot be delta two robust. The specification is not realizable. So this is sort of the idea behind this paper. So in this work, we're extending the semantics of this results to continuous time systems. So you may wonder what's the difference between continuous time and discrete time system? So one of the most obvious things is when you have a difference equation, the equation is written explicitly as as a difference equation, right? The right hand side is going to be given as certain expression. But if you have an ODE, if you interpret the the flow map as a as a map between initial states to some final state within a time unit of time, that is not often written as explicit function, right? So you have to use some sort of validated integration, which was that computation to be able to do that. And also, there is a subtle difference because you have to worry about the discrepancy between the continuous time signal and discrete time samples, which are taken at discrete time. So you have to worry about the inter sample behaviors. And these are essentially semantics issues. And then you also have more subtle issues, which is like the sampling time can go to zero. And the notion of completeness really needs to be reexamined when you have this delta inflation, which means with the if the sampling time goes to zero, the right hand side, the change is also approaching zero. It's not like a difference equation, which you already have a fixed sample, right? So there is a subtle difference there as well. And also, you could potentially have irregular sampling and also have zero behaviors. And these are the things potentially can lead the problem be undecided. Even if you add this delta perturbation to the to the to the semantics of unrealizability. So to deal with the mismatch between continuous time and discrete time signals, we essentially just inflate the the atomic propositions by changing the semantics of the laboring function. We add the atomic proposition to to a certain labor, if and only if everything in the epsilon neighborhood is also having the same neighbor essentially, right? So essentially, we're strengthening the properties by an epsilon factor. And with this, you can essentially show there is going to be a consequence if you have something satisfy a specification using the strength and labeling function. You can go back between sample data trajectory and the continuous time trajectory. So here's a sort of illustration of this fact, for example, on the left over here. And if you think about this property P is being this gray rectangle, then you can see the green trajectory, which is continuous time trajectory will reach this proposition essentially reach the set, whereas the sample trajectory will not, right? So there is a mismatch here. So what you do is you can essentially inflate this a little bit. If I say I'm going to reach not just the gray box, I'm going to reach the interior of it by some margin. And then if if you know this, this green trajectory is going to reach the interior. If you sample frequent enough, then you know that at least one of the this orange dots or red dots, you're going to reach the original sort of a proposition P, right? So you can use this strengthening of the laboring function to allow some mismatch between the samples and the continuous time trajectories. This is essentially a technical semantic thing that you can do. Isn't is really just for for the sake of making this correct, not just at the discrete time. And the key technical result relies on some lima essentially saying the following. It says, if you have two differential inclusions and they're both related to the original ODE, one is inflating by delta, the other being inflated by delta prime. And you can essentially tease out this lima, which says if there is a trajectory connecting X zero and X T by the differential inclusion S delta prime, which is a slightly smaller perturbation, then there exists some R such that anything within the R neighborhood of X zero and anything in the R neighborhood of X T, they can be connected by a trajectory from from the slightly bigger perturbed system. So this viability lima was hidden originally hidden in the proof of this. But it's also, I also use this to prove some converse results for for barrier functions. And it's recently published in this paper and automatic control transactions. And based on this technical lima, we can prove this essentially the same type of robustness, robust completeness result in the in the slide, I show you a few slides back, which says that as long as you you fix delta one and delta two, there exists a sampling time such that the sample data representation of these two systems, one with delta one perturbation, one is delta two perturbation, this T can over approximate or abstract this delta one perturbation at the same time as being abstracted by this delta two perturbation. And in the proof, there are essentially two parts. One is using the validated integration. In this paper, we really just use the one step Euler integration to show that we can compute arbitrarily precise over approximations of the ritual set and make sure that this is going to be contained in the post of this this finite transition system. And at the same time, I want to use this variability lima to show that it's possible to essentially make sure the computed over approximation in this finite transition system is also contained in the post of this delta two perturbation. So within with these two facts combined together, you can prove this result over here. And the consequence of this is you can use this to build some kind of a decision procedure. And you can answer questions like whether so you can at least determine one of the following. So you're given delta one and delta two, then you can always either say a strengthened version is not realizable, which is have a delta two perturbation. That's an epsilon strengthening of the laboring function is not realizable for a using a sample data control. Or you can actually compute a transition system to to synthesis as a controller using this abstraction. And there are this here is the outline of the proof. Essentially, there is something that this tau has to be choosing sufficiently small. But here T is actually fixed, so you have to do some technical argument to essentially some sort of the world time argument to to do the proof for any fixed sampling time. And this results essentially says the sampling time can be proved for any thing that was upper bound. So if you have any tau that you want to decide the whether there existed sample data control strategy with sampling period tau, you should be able to run the 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 algorithm and to do the same thing. And this can be essentially seen as a special case of the previous result. And here's a more interesting case. So sometimes you want to ask the following question, right? Which is suppose I want to determine whether there exists a sample data control strategy with sampling period above a certain threshold. So this threshold can be, for example, determined by how frequently my device can actually sample, which have a certain sampling frequency, right? So this result essentially shows that you give me any such lower bound as long as you're not zero, I should be able to tell you whether or not the perturbed system or slightly bigger perturbation S delta two with the epsilon strengthening cannot be realized for any sampling period greater than this threshold. Or I should be able to design a control strategy through this abstraction based approach to realize it using sampling period tau. And this tau is anything, this this tau can be chosen according to how tau star is is given. And here is essentially how the proof is is done. But I'm not not going to go go through the details. Essentially, you have to allow some sort of mismatches. And that mismatch can be breached by essentially constructing an intermediate layer, this delta three, which is between delta one and delta two. And here's another result, we essentially, what if you don't have this this robustness requirement? Then we can look actually at how the system is being controllable. So we prove some controllable based on the controllability of the system, which essentially says you can navigate the system through some control input within some set O, you can go from essentially anywhere to anywhere. Then you should be able to discretize it as describes this this the system along the trajectory. And then, because you can stay within the epsilon neighborhood or half epsilon actually, the precise statement would be starting a within a half epsilon neighborhood of that trajectory. You should always be able to stay in epsilon tube of that trajectory. Therefore, you should be able to run a abstraction based algorithm. You can show that that always exists the specification. Sorry, abstraction, which can realize the the specification for you. And based on so based on this, so this is essentially the positive results. And here is the negative result. Suppose, remember, there's a case that we didn't answer, which is suppose there is no lower bound on the on the sampling period and what could happen? And it turns out you can actually use in a one dimensional control system. If you don't restrict the lower bound in the in the sampling. And even if you add a delta perturbation to it, you should be able to use this control system to simulate any Turing machine. And here's a particular encoding affair. You can essentially encode all the configurations by rational numbers. And then you can construct the control input accordingly. And even though you had a delta perturbation here, delta can be anything between zero and one, then you still shouldn't be able to to decide reachability in this context, because the haunted problem is not decidable for for Turing machines. So based on this result, we have the following decision diagram. And essentially says, if you give me a specification, give me a model of the system. And in particular, I think you need to have the Lipschitz constant of this model. Then you give two parameters, delta one and delta two, then I should be able to compute the transition system. And also, I omit the sampling here because they're combining the discrete time and continuous time case over here. And by this finite abstraction, we should be able to solve the synthesis problem for this transition system. If the problem is realizable, then we know there is a robust controller for the original system. And if it's not realizable, then we know that the system, the specification that is not realizable for S delta two. So this is essentially the motivation of this work and the theoretical results. And I would like to highlight that this, even though the work I presented here are based on abstractions. And the same idea can be essentially extended to where you have a specification. You want to do some calculation without uniformly discretize the state space. And we call this interval analysis type of algorithm, or we call it a specification guided framework for doing controller synthesis. And we have published a series of work to to address this issue. We essentially achieving the same result without having to uniformly discretize in the state space to improve the efficiency of the algorithm. We also wrote the toolbox based on this, we call rocks, robustly complete controller synthesis. And we have included both the abstraction based synthesis engine and the specification guided engine in C plus C plus plus library. It can support some form of temporal logic specification and any nonlinear differential equation as model. And we allow simulations to be done in both Python and MATLAB if you if you choose any one of them. And here are some examples, we run this on dynamic locomotion models. We have been parking a nonlinear car. And this is an engine model and some nonlinear manipulators. And also, of course, mobile robots with kinetic models. And to conclude, I would like to use this toy example to illustrate. In some sense, if you want to be able to compute something related to dynamic systems, long term behavior, maybe some form of robust robustness is actually required. And here is a simple limit cycle where you have half stable limit cycle essentially. And this set R less than one is clearly invariant set because, you know, trajectory cannot cross each other. However, suppose you are given the specification, say, you know, verify the property, you can always stay within this set, right? Apparently, this set itself should be the sort of winning set or the set that should satisfy this property. But conceptually, this is easy because you know how analytic we can, this can be analyzed. But if you want to compute this using some sort of discretization algorithm, and then it's going to be difficult because any any slight perturbation will essentially knock out initial state from, you know, inside of the limit cycle to outside of the cycle. Therefore, you'd be not successful finding the actual sort of winning set. And this sort of triggered the the thinking, you whether or not you you would like to And this sort of trigger the the thinking you whether or not you you would like to have. A be able to compute the controller is perhaps actually depends on how robust the system is. In fact, if you look at the literature, even back in the ninety nineties, in the recurrent neural network setting. When you talk about robustness, then you can prove that your network can only robustly compute finance that machine conversations essentially things are decidable in that setting. Right? And also there's some early work talk about how robustness can be used to decide. Rigibility is bounded time rigibility for hybrid systems. And of course, there's also this Delta rigibility analysis for hybrid systems published later on. So in this work, we sort of extended this to nonlinear controller synthesis. So is this robust requirement necessary? So we also look at how. Computability of ritual set is actually related to robustness of the the system. So we took the result from this earlier paper by Collins, which essentially says the ritual set is computable, even only if the system is chain reachable robust. And we take this chain reachable robustness condition and we started to essentially proving if this condition is satisfied. Then the system should inherently have some robustness property. For example, it can only have a unique minimal set, minimum set essentially. Is like where the long term behavior is happening. And right now, we're still working on more on people sort of like more. Interesting result in this regard. Maybe we should be able to breach even further, whether you know, things can be computed is essentially related to how robust the system is. So in this work, we talked about if you have this robustness or you essentially can use that to interpret whether or not you can have a complete abstraction algorithm. Right? So use robustness as the essentially a metric to measuring robust completeness. So to summarize, essentially, this work argue that the gap between discrete abstractions and continuous control. Can be essentially breached by some sort of robustness argument. You can either say I have a. Delta one robust controller, or if you know, in nominal case, either I have a controller. Or I do not have a robust controller. Otherwise, I should be able to compute a controller using a finite abstraction. And in the future, we hope to combine this robust controllability to to have a more lower complexity. Algorithm for your synthesis, the way you can do that is because if it is controllable, then you should essentially. Be able to navigate in the state space without having to worry about non determinism, right? And because the reason that you want to run controller synthesis rather than formal verification is because you know you have to deal with non determinism. Right? Suppose you can leverage the 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 fact that system is sufficiently controllable, should be able to limit that. Another direction would be to exploit problem structures to further, for example, decompose it in some some way you can you can. Run this robustly complete algorithm still being able to give you some result on low dimension models, but then you can somehow compose them to answer questions about higher dimensional systems. And with that, I will conclude my talk and thank you very much for your attention. I would be able to happy to take any questions in person when it comes to the conference.
So we have the. At the the end of the presentation. And if you have any questions, you can put your question in a question answer session, I can read it. And also, if there is any extra question that you can ask, you can just again comment here in Q and A. And I will allow you to speak. So I have already one question. So. You Lou, are you with us?
Hi, Eagle. Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good, fine. So the first question come from Nikolai Sholov. He was asking you. Could you please comment slide 12? What is wrong with Zeno and irregular sampling?
So for irregular sampling, I think the construction that need to the negative result, which is definitely irregular. Actually, enough, I I think it also potentially need to Zeno because the it's a it's accumulating. You have a combination point because you have an infinite number of points in a in a finite interval. So so potentially you have a have a Zeno Zeno behavior there as well. So yeah, so to be able to have that, then you you use the negative result essentially sort of allude to to this type of issues. Oh, sorry, Eagle, you you you.
Yeah, I think you.
Yeah, so I.
So I think that Nikolai is now can can may ask other questions because he can unmute him.
So Nikolai, does that answer your question? So I was just showing the saying that.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you very much. Yes, I just asked about a comment, just about.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
I don't see other questions, so I just want to clarify something basic as well. So my understanding that you said that there is sample data control strategy, but how complex this sample data control structure in principle can be? So it's just a regular interval, regular interval, and that's all, or there is kind of more complex. The kind of history dependent processes that you potentially may analyze.
Yeah, that's a good question. So you're saying that the 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 mechanism of triggering the control is really simple, right? So the technical sort of argument mainly goes to how can you compute the ritual set of the O D or different differential inclusion. Up to any precision at the same time, because if you have a continuous time. The difference between a continuous time and discrete time really is you want to be able to have this inner approximation of the. The perturbed system. Doesn't matter essentially is a two argument going on there because. Even if the the sampling time goes to zero, you still want the the computed over approximation is an inner approximation of of the different differential. Inclusion, which is perturbed slightly bigger, right? And the the reason you focus on this would be. If you have irregular sampling, then you can still maybe argue as long as you have a dual time, then you should still be able to do certain things. But for simplicity, as you said, like, you know, you do favor sampling data control strategy because that's the thing that you do. Maybe you want to implement in an actual system, right? So the argument can potentially be extended to, you know, as long as I have a dual time. Then you should still be able to do the same type of complete this argument as well.
Okay, thank you. So we have to move on, but we have two quick questions. So I can ask maybe allow you can ask a question. And then Martin would ask the question himself.
So Eugene has an interesting question says, can you discretize control completely with a standard long linear control design by? Okay, interesting question. So. I've been recently thinking about like, how can you connect this with the argument essentially, right? So remember the viability limb I was showing somehow the same type of robustness argument can be used for converse the theorem, even converse barrier function. Argument as well. Yeah, I guess I can't cannot answer this in the like a technical way, but. I assume so, right? If you have a good, good, good control strategy somehow, you know, depends on how how you measure. The good performance of the control, I guess, right? But I guess robustness argument, if you want to think about even in the converse the up north theorem context is also always been often being used as well. Right? But but nonetheless, I have to say the the type of perturbation is is slightly different because. Here, because you're doing computation, I do have to use a perturbation that's. That's not vanishing as it goes to the origin, for example, but if you are focused on stability analysis. And their perturbation can essentially be a continuous function of the of the state. And it can potentially goes to zero as X goes to zero as well. And and that robustness can also be provided by how nice the how smooth the 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 OD is essentially have a Lipschitz. Inclusion, then you can actually prove that robustness for free. So that's that's different, right? I guess there's always this difference between when you're computing things, when you're analyzing things. So so, yeah. Okay, Martin has a question.
Yeah, right. So essentially, you're using a semantic construction. So robustness should not depend on the particular syntactic structure of your specification. But it's right that the epsilon strengthening basically introduces the three valued notion of atoms. P and not P are no longer compliments, right? There's no man's land in between. I mean, that rewriting a formula might actually change the robustness. So my question was, is this true that robustness now because of the strengthening again depends on. On the actual syntactic shape of the specification or not.
That's a yeah, that's a good question. I I think. Yeah, the semantics issue really is a key, right? I sort of, you know, don't worry about it by by doing this strengthening. But I. Yeah, I don't know. Actually, I want to ask you a question, right? Do you know anything about like, you know, how you argue about the the. The decidability, if you have this sort of like, you know, semantics mismatches or something, right? I was sort of just playing with one particular notion, you can essentially, you know, do this rule. They can also robust satisfaction of this specification, right? Do you know anything in this sort of like direction? People are look what people are looking at. Is it no man's name? But I suppose you probably have thought about this before.
No, the moment land trust just referred to this gap between the.
Oh, I see. Sorry, I saw this.
Set defined by P and the strengthening and not P. You have a gap in between those two, which I call the moment.
I see, I see.
Yeah, no, but I'm I'm I would have to look into your construction in detail. I just was asking which of the two might apply because that was positive.
I see.
That you were trying to do most of it semantically, but it seems that a little bit of syntactic bias still slips in.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, definitely. I'm only answering either one way or other way, but there's still a gap between those two semantics. Yeah.
Sorry, I want to stop now the conversation mainly because we can discuss later in the virtual environment after the session. So let's thanks to the speaker for answering the questions. I'm not sure that we can upload, but I can do it for everyone. And let's move to the second talk. We a bit over running, but I hope that we still have some gap of the time between the talks later.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Andrea Peruffo from Teudelt. And I'm here to present our work, formal abstraction and synthesis of parametric stochastic processes. This work is in collaboration with Professor Alessandro Bate from the University of Oxford. I'd like to start with a brief motivation of this work. So we wanted to formally verify models which are intrinsically uncertain, especially models which are estimated from real data. Typically, these models have parameters that lie within a range of possible values. So these are effectively. Parametric models which are written in S D stochastic difference equation. So the objective of this work is to provide an approach to formally verify these uncertain systems written in S D form. And to do so, we want to extend the formal abstractions technique to parametric models, to parametric S D. Parametric models, as I mentioned, for verification purposes typically are presented as Markov models, either. Parametric Markov chain or a parametric Marcus Markov decision process. But what if we have a parametric difference equation? We may remind that formal abstraction techniques translate a stochastic difference equations. Into a Markov model. And these have attached an abstraction error, which must be accounted for when we want to. Compute the probability of satisfying a given formal property. Where this work, we want to bridge the gap between formal abstractions and parameter synthesis. In in practice, we will propose an approach which we name parametric formal abstraction to tackle parametric models and to formally verify those. The presentation will be divided into four parts. I'll start with a very brief and high level overview of parametric models. To then move into the state of the art for instructions. Finally, I'll go through the main core of the work, which is the formal actions for parametric models. And I will show some case studies that we where we apply this technique. I'll start briefly with parametric models. We all know that parametric models encompass infinite models into one. For example, the parametric coin, which is usually fifty fifty probability of landing heads or or landing tails. When we translate it into a parametric models, we we may arrange the probability of having heads from zero to one. And we have effectively infinite and infinite amount of models. We may are we may be interested in properties as what's the probability of reaching a safe set, in this case, heads. And the probability of reaching the safe state might be greater or less than a given. Threshold gamma. We may also ask queries like, does it exist an instantiation of our parameters such that the model satisfy the property psi? Or all the instantiations satisfy psi? On the other hand, we might be interested in a feasible region, so to know the minimum and maximum value of the parameter lambda such that the model satisfy our property psi. A few words more on the parametric coin model, for example. Where the probability of heads is lambda, probability of tails is naturally one minus lambda. We may ask qualitative or quantitative questions, for example, does it exist a value lambda such that. The probability of the next event being heads is greater than point five. Or we might as well be interested in knowing the minimum and maximum value of lambda such that the probability of heads, heads, heads as an event. Is greater than zero point nine. I will now move into the formal abstraction state of the art techniques. Formal abstractions, we know that is an approach that translates continuous state into finite state processes. Usually to verify a given a property psi. We may start by considering a very simple S D stochastic difference equation as the following. X of K plus one is equal F of X of K plus omega of K. Omega K is the stochastic term. Which we assume belongs to a given probability distribution. For example, if omega K belongs to a Gaussian distribution with average value zero and variance one. Then we know that X of K plus one belongs always to a Gaussian distribution. This time centered at F of X of K, the variance remains one. After this rather trivial observation, but key observation, we may start the formal abstraction procedure. Which can be divided into three steps. First of all, we want to partition the state space. Each partition will then define discrete state for the market model. We then evaluated the transitions among the discrete states. Finally, we compute the the probability of satisfying a given property psi. And the abstraction, the formal abstraction technique also has an error bound attached. And we need to account for this when we compute the probability of satisfying the the formal property. I will now briefly give an overview of the formal abstraction technique. We assume to have a safe set. We assume to have a safe set S, and everything that is outside, let's say, the safe set is deemed unsafe. So we have SU, which is the complement of the safe set S. We want to partition the safe set S into hyper rectangles. This is not needed, of course, to have hyper rectangles, but comes in handy in many, many occasions. And once we have partitions, the partition become discrete states, Z i. And the unsafe set SU becomes the unsafe state Z u. Once we have all the discrete states, we are now ready to compute the transitions among these. The transitions are computed by marginalizing the stochastic kernel, which means, let's assume that omega belongs to a given distribution, which is P of omega. To compute the probability of transitioning from partition S i to partition S j, which is indeed translated into the probability of transitioning between discrete state Z i to Z j, we compute the integral of the probability distribution function over the target partition, which is S of j in this case, given that we are centered in our starting partition, which is S i in this case. As the image show, we have a probability kernel is centered at the center of S i, and we want to compute the probability of reaching S j. So we integrate the kernel over region S j. And this is the way we compute the transition probability between state Z i to state Z j. To compute the probability of reaching the unsafe set, we simply compute the complement to one of all the probabilities of staying within the safe set. Once this is done, we are ready to compute the abstraction error. It can be proved that the abstraction error can be upper bounded by this formula, where N is the number of discrete time steps, H of omega is the Lipschitz constant of the stochastic term, delta S is the partition diameter, and L S is simply the volume of our safe set. Once all of this is done, we know that if the Markov model satisfies the property psi with probability gamma, then we guarantee that the original system, the stochastic difference equation, satisfies psi with probability gamma plus or minus the abstraction error epsilon. So as an example, we know that if the probability of reaching the unsafe state Z u at the next step is less than a point one, we guarantee that in the original system, the probability of reaching the unsafe set SU is less than zero point one plus the abstraction error epsilon. Right. After the introduction or the summary on formal abstraction, we are now ready to talk about the main core of the presentation, which is the formal abstraction of parametric models. So as I mentioned before, parametric models are typically given in the form of Markov models, parametric Markov chain and parametric MDPs. And formal abstraction exists for non-parametric models, for certain SDEs. So we want to combine techniques for parametric models, especially parametric synthesis and formal abstraction. We start by considering a parametric SD with parameter lambda, which we define F of lambda, which is X of k plus one equal F of lambda X of k. So we have parameters within the deterministic drift. And also we have parameters within omega of lambda k. So we have parameters also on the stochastic term. We start from the parametric SD. We want to translate it into a parametric Markov chain via parametric formal abstraction. So we start from F of lambda and we go to M of theta. Of course, also the parameters may change during this translation. We also need to translate the property psi, psi of lambda, which as well depends on the parameters, now becomes phi of theta. Finally, once we compute the feasible set for theta, and we need to relate this into the original parameters lambda to compute the feasible set for the original SD. In in pictorial form, we show this, that we start from an SDE F of lambda, property psi of lambda, parameters of course lambda, we apply the parametric abstraction technique, and we obtain parametric Markov model M with parameter theta. Parameters theta in general can be related to the original parameters lambda via function g. The abstraction, of course, has an abstraction error epsilon, and we have a new property which is phi of theta. We now have a full parametric model. We can apply parametric synthesis technique to find the feasible set T where the M of theta satisfies our property phi. Once we have so, we can apply g to the minus one. So we apply the inverse to find the feasible set of lambda, which is the original parameters for the original SD. A bit, now a bit more on the transitions among the parametric states. So we start from a parametric SD, which again may have parameters on the parametric, on the drift or on the stochastic term. We partition the state space with a uniform or adaptive grid. We now have to marginalize the kernel, which is a parametric kernel. To do so, we have two main approaches. If the analytic inversion of the kernel exists, then we can extract the parameters and compute directly the feasible set. But if this is not possible, we have to go for a kernel approximation. I will briefly talk about the case where we can indeed have an analytic inversion of the kernel to then move on to the approximating, to the approximated scenario. In the case of a uniform noise, for example, we know that the integral of the PDF is simply a constant, which we name C, and the integral over the partition, the target partition S j is simply C times the length of the partition. In this case, we denote it with B j minus A j. If we have a parametric noise, so we have a parametric variance, for example, the variance modifies the noise domain, which can stretch, we can be narrower or wider according to the value of the variance. Therefore, we have the parameters which enter into instances. We have that C, which previously was a constant, is now depending on lambda, the parameter. And also we have that the, we may integrate over a region which depend on the parameter. To do so, we have to link the parametric variance to the noise domain. If we compute the formula for the, for the variance of the uniform noise, we can relate the noise with, so D D to the to the noise variance, which is two times square root of three lambda. And with this, we compute the domain extrema, which is lower bounded by mu, the average value minus square root of three lambda, and the upper bound is simply mu plus square root of three times lambda. Once we have so, we know also that the probability distribution function is not a constant anymore, but now is one over two times square root of three lambda within the domain and zero otherwise. Therefore, we can compute the transitions between two states. We start from Z i and we want to reach Z j. And we compute the integral over the partition S j. So we multiply the PDF, which is one over two square root of three lambda, and we now have to take into account the integration area, which is given by the minimum between the partition upper bound and the domain with upper bound minus the maximum between the partition lower bound A j and the noise domain lower bound, mu minus square root of three lambda. In a case instead where the analytic expression doesn't exist, for example, the Gaussian noise, we know that the Gaussian noise, the integral of a Gaussian noise can be written in function, as a function of the error function. Unfortunately, it doesn't exist any analytic expression for the inverse of the error function. Therefore, we have two ways to deal with this. One is to approximate directly the error function, the CDF in this case, or we want to approximate directly the Gaussian kernel. If we want to approximate the error function, we may use a rational expression as a Taylor expression, as a Taylor extension in this case, where we can extract directly our parameters. Instead of x, we just need to substitute our parameters lambda. Or we can directly approximate the Gaussian distribution. For example, with a Bayes distribution, which has a probability distribution function which is polynomial. Therefore, we can extract directly the parameters from there, compute the feasible, the feasible set, and then relate them to the original lambda. Of course, every time we have an approximation, this must be added to the abstraction error. So our final, our final error is given by the sum of the abstraction error for the formal abstraction plus the error given by the approximations. I'll now move on to a couple of case studies where we apply the parametric formal abstractions technique. We start with a uniform noise, 1D system, where we have lambda one, which is divided into A and M, and lambda two, which multiplies the stochastic term omega. We have a safe set between zero and one, and the unsafe set, of course, is the complement. We want to verify a property which is, given that the probability of reaching the unsafe set at the next time step is less than zero point five. First thing first, we want to compute the abstraction error. The abstraction error, as we've seen previously, can be now computed as delta S, the partition width, times the Lipschitz constant of the stochastic term. Given that the stochastic term is parametric, we also have a Lipschitz constant which is parametric. Now, we assume that the maximum abstraction error we can accept is zero point twenty five. So to attain this, we set the parameter, the partition's diameter to be zero point twenty five. And we want to be, and we want to limit the Lipschitz constant of the noise to be less than one. This gives us some existence condition for lambda two, one of our parameters, where the abstraction is actually valid. With zero point twenty five, we divide the safe set into four partitions. We, of course, have the unsafe set. In total, we have then five discrete states from Z one to Z four plus Z unsafe. We can now compute the transition probability among these, among these states, as I mentioned before. This is a uniform noise, so we simply need to integrate the PDF over the target region. Let's say that the target region is S of j. So every term must be multiplied by the PDF of the noise, which is one over two square root of three lambda, represented by the blue line here, times the integration area, which is again, taking into account the minimum between the upper bound of the target partition B j and the upper bound of the noise domain, which is given by this formula, minus the maximum between the partition lower bound A j or the noise domain lower bound, which is given by this formula in this case. And once we're done so, we compute the transitions and compute the probability of reaching the unsafe set. Our procedure returns an analytic expression of this feasible set, which is an implicit function of lambda one and lambda two. We now have the exact analytic expression of the physical set for this, for this case, which is depicted in the picture. Let me now move on into the final case study, which regards a population of photovoltaic systems. For photovoltaic system, I mean, the conjunction between a photovoltaic panel plus an inverter. This system can measure the grid frequency and its behavior is governed by the value of the grid frequency. In particular, this system must be off when the frequency goes outside a given safety range. Whenever the frequency goes back inside the safety range, the device must wait around approximately thirty seconds to reconnect. As we see from this graph, we have that the frequency goes outside the safety range by delimited by these red lines. The panel, the photovoltaic system goes off and stays off for thirty seconds, where the thirty seconds, the frequency remains inside the bound, and then just then can reconnect. Of course, if a whole population of photovoltaic system behave asynchronously, this can make the grid unstable, because we will have a great portion of power to disconnect at the same time from the network. We want to verify a specification, which is the frequency, the grid frequency, to remain always within given safety bounds. So a population of photovoltaic panels have heterogeneous disconnection and reconnection thresholds, and we model this with a, with a given, with a uniform probability distribution. We model as well the population with a three-state model, on, off, and wait. On is for the panel which are on and injecting power into the electric grid. Off is for the non-active photovoltaic panel. And finally, we have the waiting state, which is representing the situation where the frequency is within the safety range, but the APV system cannot reconnect due to the, to the delay it has to wait. The transitions, of course, are probabilistic and a function of the frequency and of the delay, as I mentioned. And we parameterize the distribution of the reconnection and disconnection threshold with two parameters. One is the heterogeneity, so the variance of this distribution with gamma, with lambda, and the disconnection threshold mean, which we denote with mu. The model for a population of photovoltaic system is as follows. We have the A of k, which is the disconnection probability. When we are in the on state, we go to off with A of k, and we stay in on with one minus A of k. Once we are in the off state, we can reconnect with a probability which is B of k. Notice that we go to the waiting state. Because to go towards the on state, we have to have the reconnection probability, B of k, times the probability of the delay being elapsed, which is in this case, denoted z of k. Each of this probability of disconnection depend on the frequency F of k. So we model this with a uniform distribution. At each time step, we compute the probability of disconnecting and reconnecting according to this probability distribution. We compute the integral between this domain of the disconnection probability, which can be zero or one, or a given integral within, whenever the frequency is within this range. The population, of course, is immersed into the electric network, and the frequency can be written as follows. So F of k is the grid frequency. Delta F is the deviation of the frequency, which depends on the previous value of the frequency and on the previous value of P P V, which is the power output of the population of PV panels. We then relate this with X and Y of k, which are respectively the probability of being on and of the being in the waiting state. And finally, we have P P V, which is simply the probability of being And finally, we have P V V, which is simply the probability of being on, X of k, times a given constant, which is P max. We then have a three-dimensional state, which is given by F. F is the safe set for the frequency, which must stay between plus and minus 0.8. The power must stay within zero to P max. And X being a probability can only stay between zero and one. The overall safe set is the cross product of these three sets. The unsafe set, of course, is the complement to R three. We divide the partition with a diameter of 0.01, which returns an abstraction error of 0.1. We finally want to verify a property, which is the probability of reaching the unsafe set at the next time step to be less than 0.15. We computed the parametric abstraction and computed the feasible set. And our procedure returns the following formula, which is then numerically confirmed by the blue area here. You see that less than 0.15, we have the whole blue area, which lays almost flat. We read this result as follows. The heterogeneity or the variance lambda and the disconnection average value mu should decrease or increase in parallel. In other words, the system, the, the electric grid can withstand higher heterogeneity if the disconnection mean is far from the frequency nominal values. To conclude, a quick summary of our, of our approach. We propose a new approach to tackle parametric systems named parametric formal abstractions, which translates a parametric continuous, continuous space ST into a parametric Markov chain. We apply then parameter synthesis technique on this parametric Markov chain to obtain a safe feasible set on the, on the discrete, the discrete system. We then translate the discrete parameters into continuous parameters of the ST. As future direction for this work, we want to develop this approach into a software tool, which can be embedded in existing software tool for parameter, for formal abstractions as Stokki or Faust. Thank you for the attention. I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
So we are opening the table for questions. So please to type basic question in Q and A. And in this case, I can allow you to speak and ask you a question. Maybe before we're waiting for questions, may I ask Andrea about computational hardness of the procedures that you do? Is there a particular part of the, of the method is computationally hard? Or can you just comment about the size of the system that you can translate and model and do the synthesis, actually?
Yeah. Hi, first of all. Yeah, so the procedure suffers from, well, state space explosion, right? Because every time we compute an abstraction, it's really easy to have a lot of states. Therefore, all the computations following that clearly suffers from it. And then on top, we potentially have parameters in every, in every element of the transition matrix. And you know, the more parameters and the more terms you have, the more complex is the, the procedure itself.
Do you have any numerical values or have you measured or do you have some limits? Or do you understand, or maybe you can comment what is feasible using your methods at the moment to analyze?
Numericals, I don't, I don't have them on top of my head now, but it takes several minutes to have the simulation of solar panels, for example. Which, you know, against the same numerical simulation, the numerical simulation is much faster. Because of course you can simply throw some numbers and get your, get your result. So so far, not very good from the, for the formal verification techniques. But hopefully in the future, we might have some, some improvement or some maybe implementation tricks that help.
Yeah, and maybe which direction it can be improved or what is your expectation? What is the scope for improvement in principle?
So right now, this was developed as like a case study more than a order in the software tool, right? So we expect to have some, the code in order and in, yeah, essentially improve the implementation.
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking for questions. Any extra questions so far? If you, I can see the raised hand of Martin, but I think it's from the previous session. And if you don't have specific questions right now, I would suggest to move to the online coffee break and we can actually discuss anything there when we'll not have time constraints as well. So let me thanks to Andrea for giving a talk.
Thank you.
And so I'm just closing the session. I'm just telling that at the moment, there is a coffee break and there is a virtual environment where you can walk and meet your colleagues and friends, and I would encourage you to do this.